Insemit public comment will be provided on the screen by the clerk at the appropriate time, but are also available for those of you that have agendas on the front page of the agenda. With that, I will ask our city clerk to establish a quorum, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Addis, here. Councilmember Ford, here. Councilmember Heller.
Here.
Councilmember Barton, here. And Mayor Heding.
Present. We do have a quorum. I'll call the meeting to order and ask that, in your own way, you would remember those in need, and we'll just take a moment of silence, please. Thank you for that, and if you'll rise, we will have our Pledge of Allegiance. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll take time out for the events occurring in the front right, to my right here. Fixing our table, thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. Mr. City Attorney, do we have any closed session items to report this evening?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. No closed session items to report.
Fantastic, thank you. Chris, that brings us to mayor and councilmember reports and announcements. Let me start with councilmember Heller, sir. Any announcements this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank everybody who had the opportunity to come to the Morro Bay Maritime Museum Family Fun Day last Saturday. Highly successful event, lots of fun for kids. It was free, and thank you all for coming, and thank all the volunteers at the museum who made it happen, particularly Bonnie Jones, who's the chair of the board of directors. So, thank you for attending.
And thank you for being involved in the muffin contest. That was fun and exciting, and appreciate it.
There were not a muffin I didn't like.
Thank you. All right, let's go ahead, and councilmember Barton, please.
I just have one thing to report. I had a fun time this past weekend going back over to the Fresno area to see my family and to go to my 50th high school reunion. It never in a million years occurred to me that I would live to be that old, but anyway, that was great fun, because a lot of those people I know from kindergarten on, so it was really a hoot. So, anyway, I had fun doing that. So now I'll pass the rest of my time on to Jen, because I know she always has lots of things to report, so.
Thank you. Graduated when she was 16, that's a great thing. Councilmember Addis, anything for us this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have two. For Morro Bay High parents, the high school is having a listening session tomorrow from 5:15 to 6:15 for any parent, and then at 6:15 to 7:15 for Spanish-speaking parents. And the high school held these listening sessions last year and are beginning their first round of listening sessions for this year, and it's really for high school families to voice what they're interested in and how they would like Morro Bay High School to be. And then, just a reminder, I know I shared this last week, but the Drama Club at Morro Bay High is going to be doing a production of Arsenic and Old Lace in December, on the 8th, 9th, and 10th at 7:00 p.m., and you can get tickets at mbhs.slcusd.org pretty soon. The ticket link should be opening mid-October, so in just a few days. And that's it, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford, please.
Thank you, and yes, I do have a few things on my list. Thank you, Councilmember Barton. I want to also comment on the Family Fun Day I was able to attend, and it really was a community-oriented, really fun, family-oriented event. And so I just want to thank all that participated, and that includes our councilmember Heller and also our city manager, Scott Collins participated in it as well, so thank you. I have a couple of events to talk about. Reminder that this weekend, we have Morro Bay Seings. It's being put on by Community Foundation of Estero Bay. And last meeting, I totally butchered the band name that the theme is centered around, so I'm going to try it again. Creedence Clearwater Revival is the theme. I could not get that out this last time. But anyway, if you're interested in tickets, you can purchase them at communityfoundationesterobay.org. So it's a pretty long website there. The second event is a witches paddle. If you haven't had a chance to participate or have watched this event take place in our harbor, it's a really amazing sight to see. And so this year, it will take place on October 22nd at 4:00 p.m. And the location where everyone will take off is at Coleman Park, again, October 22nd at 4:00 p.m. And this year, they are just, they're spreading the word about the Friends of the Harbor Department, raising funds for that. If you're interested in donating to them as well, and the witches paddle, that's their chosen organization this year. And the third event is going to take place on Sunday, November 6th. It's our Morro Bay Triathlon. If you're interested in participating in the triathlon, you can go to morrobaytri.com. It's a wonderful event that you can always witness happening around town, and you can go to The Rock and see where everyone gathers for that main event. Also, I had the opportunity to attend the Slocogge Safety Forum that happened last week. It was three sessions over the course of two days. It was very informational. The idea is creating a culture of safety in the slow region, and it was really just a bunch of folks that are interested in improving transportation safety within our communities. And so it was really amazing to meet other community advocates and also to listen to leaders within our community that are in charge of everything from transportation, the development of roads, to the healthcare workers that take care of us when those roads don't work necessarily and we have a collision, or we were told, "Don't call them accidents, they are collisions. There are no accidents, and they could all be prevented." So I just, one statistic that I did learn, which is pretty sad, is that there's an average of 30 deaths a year in Slow County that result from collisions, whether it be pedestrians, cycling, or vehicles, and 140 injuries in Slow County every year. So the idea is to eventually get to zero, right? But how does it happen? It takes a lot of work, it takes a lot of collaboration within communities, and sharing of information of what works and what doesn't work. So I appreciate that opportunity to attend that, and that is all that I have for announcements. Thank you.
Creedence Clearwater Revival, that is fantastic. What a great band that was, and that'll be fun. Just a couple of things to announce, and thank you, councilmember Heller, also for volunteering on that Saturday Fun Day Maritime Museum. That was a great event and well-attended, and Mr. Collins, I enjoyed your muffin as well. However, it wasn't the winning muffin, but it was quite good. And then on Thursday, the 6th, I just want to congratulate also the Maritime Museum folks who had a fundraiser at the Morro Bay Yacht Club. That was a great event on Thursday evening, the 6th, and sign auction, lots of good funds, so great fundraising opportunity for them, and I enjoyed that greatly. I also want to call to your attention, we do have this evening a proclamation, but on Saturday, October the 22nd, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., we will have the Filipino Monument Rededication at Coleman Park, again, the 22nd, Saturday, 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. That will be a rededication to the Filipino American National Historical Society, the California Central Coast Chapter, and the city of Morro Bay are putting that on, so that should be a great event with lots of recognition, and want to make sure our community comes out and supports that event on the 22nd. Thank you. And Mr. Collins, I'll turn it over to you for your announcements.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Scott Collins, city manager. A few announcements to make. The last of our tunes at Tydland's Concert will be held this Thursday at Tydland's Park from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. I want to thank the recreation team and recreation manager Kirk Carmichael's in the crowd tonight. They, along with the active adults, have done a phenomenal job of pulling together a really fun event, a series of events, and we've seen several hundred people attend each of the three so far, looking forward to the last one. The city is embarking on the Wayfinding Project, a long-awaited project. You'll start to see new signs being placed around town. We apologize for some of the inconvenience around parking, ironically enough, that where we're going to be putting new parking signs in, but also wayfinding signs that help direct community members and visitors to points of interest throughout the business corridors and tourist areas of the city. And this one's a bit harder one to say. Our Morro Bay Police Chief Jody Cox has announced retirement for the end of this calendar year. Jody Cox has been with the city for 10 years, promoted to police chief in November of 2018, and took on command of the department in a really challenging time. You know, we can all talk about some of the challenges that law enforcement is facing, but being on the inside and having to lead a team when that is happening, Jody's been phenomenal. Not only that, but also connecting our community with the police department through the Citizens Academy, the police chief's advisory board, mobile phone app, the Beat Cop program, and a variety of other initiatives that he's taken on his own, but gotten his whole team to get on board with, and really just kind of bringing his team under his wing and from a leadership standpoint, and encouraging training and development as human beings, because the work of law enforcement agents is beginning harder and harder, and a lot more is expected of them, and he continues to bring on great people to help lead this department forward. It's going to be really, really hard to let go Jody, but he's going to be in our community moving forward. And he's done a phenomenal job to help create new leaders within the department, so I'm encouraged by that, and I know we'll be served well because of all the efforts that he put forward tirelessly, working seven days a week most weeks. So just wanted to extend my gratitude to Chief Cox. Round of applause, please. So we'll have opportunities to thank him along the way, but yeah, we will be doing a community survey and survey of police personnel to get their thoughts about what the next chief should bring to the position. Last update, I'll kick over to Greg Qualick about our water reclamation facility. Thanks, Greg.
Thank you, Mr. Collins. Pleased to announce that as of 8:00 a.m. today, the water reclamation facility is now fully accepting and taking in all of the city's wastewater, and it's treating it to tertiary standards. I have here a bottle of effluent that came, I won't drink it today, has not yet been through advanced treatment, but this water, this effluent, is the effluent that goes into our ocean, and it is far cleaner than what the old plant was putting out. So that's something we're very proud of. That was one of the main reasons why we built this plant. And so I won't bore you with all the details. I thought you were asking me to shake it. Okay, so yeah, we're very proud. The operators that are on our team have put in an incredible amount of work and dedication, especially in this last two weeks. They've been going in in the middle of the night on the weekends. This morning, they went in at 3:30 while we were all still sleeping to get this thing right. They've been working very closely and in coordination with our design-build team, as well as with our contractor for the conveyance system, to make sure that all the alarms are working and all of the computer systems are working and talking to each other, and fixing bugs and doing things like that. So we're very proud of them, and again, we're just very, we're very happy that we've now reached this milestone. For the next couple of months, we will still be in a startup phase. Our design-build team, Philance Black and Beach, still has care and custody of the plant as we fully dial in all the various complex components at the site. We expect our startup phase to be completed sometime in December or January, at which point the plant will be ours, so that's my announcement.
Good to go? Good. Congratulations, and I wanted to just recognize Damaris Hansen, as well as Paul Amico, our project manager, and Damaris is our department director out there. You guys have done a fantastic job. It's great to see that that bottle of water will cherish that for a long time to come, and congratulations. Yeah, we'll take it, absolutely. I'll drink, I won't drink it, though, until maybe it's filtered again, but fantastic. And Chief Cox, there'll be a lot more to say about you, sir, but you are the consummate example of the kind of police person, and the staff that you have built around your leadership is exemplary. Your shoes are not only going to be hard to fill, but your badge is going to be hard to replace, and we, as a city council and as a city, are so grateful to you for your leadership over these last years. It has been a joy and a pleasure to work with you. I know you're not gone yet. We're going to have some hearty partying time, but I just wanted to recognize that. When I saw the announcement, it was emotional, but at the same time, congratulations on a job well done, sir. Thank you. Okay, that brings us to our presentations this evening. Excuse me. The first one is a proclamation, and I'll ask Sam Gottlieb, if Sam is here, if you'll come up to the podium. Sam, welcome from the Lumina Alliance. If you see us waving our hand around, there is a fly that's just liking us, and so we're trying to get rid of that. Welcome. We do have a proclamation for you from the city council, the city of Morro Bay, California, recognizing October 2022 as Dating and Domestic Violence Action Month. And it reads as this. Whereas Dating and Domestic Violence Action Month calls attention to the fact that sexual and intimate partner violence is widespread and impacts every person in Morro Bay, whereas Lumina Alliance provides essential lifesaving services for survivors, their children and families throughout San Luis Obispo County, including Morro Bay. And whereas domestic violence is a pattern of control in an intimate relationship where one person uses coercion and violence to gain power and control over his or her partner. And whereas domestic violence can result in physical injury, psychological trauma, and even death, the devastating consequences of domestic violence can cross generations and can last a lifetime. Whereas there is a need to focus on the individualized needs of domestic violence survivors, and whereas the marginalization of certain groups in society, including undocumented individuals, transgender individuals, and those living with disabilities, increases their vulnerability to intimate partner violence. And whereas Lumina Alliance continues to provide a safe environment to those affected by domestic violence with crisis intervention, counseling, education, legal services, and emergency safe housing, with the help of dedicated volunteers and professionals. And whereas Lumina Alliance has received over 2,400 calls to the crisis and information line, provided more than 6,400 collective nights for shelter clients, and provided more than 5,000 hours of therapy. And whereas Lumina Alliance and Cal Poly Safer partnered to create this year's DVAM theme, which is "We Deserve," in recognition that in all relationships, we deserve respect, equality, honesty, bodily autonomy, independence, boundaries, healing, joy, and so much more. And whereas the city of Morro Bay strongly supports the efforts of Lumina Alliance, how every segment of our society can work together to better address intimate partner violence, and how to help survivors connect with services. Now therefore be it resolved that the Morro Bay City Council does hereby recognize the important work done by domestic violence programs, do hereby proclaim the month of October to be National Dating and Domestic Violence Action Month. And thank you so much for all of the work that you and your organization do, Sam, and if you'd like to say a few words, we'd appreciate that.
Thank you so much. Oh, a little shorter than who was here last. Thank you very much, Mayor and city council, for this proclamation. As you mentioned, my name is Sam Gottlieb. I am the chief people and culture officer for Lumina Alliance. Our mission is to empower those impacted by sexual and intimate partner violence through innovative advocacy, healing, and prevention programs. Although we have a new name, Lumina Alliance has supported this community for nearly 50 years. We offer a 24-hour crisis and information line, case management, restraining order assistance, other legal assistance, accompaniment and advocacy services. We also have three emergency shelters, transitional housing, individual and group therapy, and a robust prevention and education department. As previously mentioned, October is Dating and Domestic Violence Action Month. This year, we are focused on ensuring everyone in our community understands that they deserve healthy and fulfilling relationships. Lumina Alliance has planned several events throughout the month, including the Celebrate Community Fun Run and Festival this Saturday, October 15th, at Mission Plaza in downtown San Luis Obispo. This event brings together supporters throughout the county to walk in celebration of our vision to create a safe, thriving, and equitable community. We are also hosting a movie screening of Dirty Dancing at the Palm Theater on October 22nd, followed by a panel discussion about the film with experts in the fields of sexual and intimate partner violence and healthcare. Visit luminaliance.org to register for these events, or learn more about other events happening in the community in honor of Dating and Domestic Violence Action Month. And please remember, if you or anyone you know is experiencing sexual or intimate partner violence and needs help, call our confidential 24-hour hotline. The phone number is 805-545-8888 to speak with one of our advocates. We are so grateful for this proclamation and the ongoing support of the Morro Bay City Council. On behalf of Lumina Alliance's Board of Directors, our staff, and volunteers, we thank all of you for taking action this month to create our vision of a safe, thriving, and equitable community. Thank you.
Thank you, Sam. Sam, could you give us that number one more time for the community to hear?
Absolutely. It is 805-545-8888.
Great, and thank you so much for being here. Congratulations. Thanks for your work. That brings us to our second proclamation this evening. If I could invite up with us Rosalie Marquez? Is Rosalie here? Hi, Rosalie. She's vice president of the Filipino-American National Historical Society, the Central Coast Chapter, and we also have a proclamation for you and your organization. It is a proclamation of the city council of the city of Morro Bay, proclaiming the month of October 2022 as Filipino-American History Month. And it reads as follows. Whereas the importance of Morro Bay to the Filipino community and the Filipino-American National Historical Society cannot be overstated, and whereas the city council and staff of the city of Morro Bay recognize the importance of honoring the Filipino history, culture, and contributions to the United States, California, the Central Coast, and Morro Bay. And whereas on October 18th, 1587, Luzon Indios came ashore from the Spanish galleon Nuestra Senora de Esperanza and landed at what is now Morro Bay, California, representing a monumental moment in the history as the first Filipinos landed in North America. And whereas the city worked closely with FANHS in establishing a historical monument in October of 1995, locating the marker near Coleman Beach to honor this important moment in history and the connection between the Filipino-American history and Morro Bay. And whereas the city has recognized Filipino-American History Month in October for several years, since that time, as Filipino-Americans represent the second-largest Asian-American group in the nation, and the third-largest ethnic group in California, and have made an indelible contribution to our country and to the state of California. And whereas with violence and discrimination against Asian-Americans and Pacific Islander communities on the rise in our country, it is more important than ever to support and honor the Filipino community and FANHS, and take measures to relay that importance and to seek support from our community. Now therefore be it resolved that the city of Morro Bay City Council does hereby proclaim the month of October 2022 as Filipino-American History Month, and invite the community to learn more about the Filipino culture, your people, the tradition and values that have positively enriched our community. Therefore be it resolved that the city council, the city of Morro Bay, does hereby encourage all members of the community to attend, once again, mentioned it earlier, but the Filipino Historical Monument Rededication Event at Coleman Beach on Saturday, October 22nd, at 11:00 a.m. Thank you so much, and Rosalie, would you say a few words for us, please?
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. I am Rosalie Salutin Marquez, a former president and of the Filipino-American National Historical Society, the California Central Coast. Jo To Logan is our chapter president and co-founder, and he could not be here tonight, he's 92 years old. We'd like to thank the city of Morro Bay for the proclamation and for the upcoming rededication and recognition of Filipino-Americans, and also relocating our monument. This monument is important to us nationwide for the first Filipinos that stepped foot on this continent, Morro Bay, as I mentioned, in 1587. We thank Eloise Gomez Bora, a librarian now retired from UCLA, who published in the Ameri Asia Journal her findings of the explorer of Captain Pedro de Uno Mundo's log. Her article details how the captain is sailing for Spain and had eight Filipinos as crew members. It was the Filipinos who led the land party, landing party. It was estimated by a couple of our members of our chapters that the location, it was determined that the location at the actual landing is near the Discovery Museum, near the golf course. Because of this finding, this site was dedicated, as you mentioned, in 1995. Our co-founders of National, Fred and Dorothy Cordova, believe that the Filipino-Americans need to tell our stories and experiences to let their nation know who we are and the contributions that we have made to this country. Therefore, the state of California, congressionally nationwide, the month of October is designated Filipino-American History Month. We'd like to thank Greg and Scott, and their staff, his staff, their staff, and our member, Anna Perman, who did the artwork for the kiosk that's going to be placed there. It's absolutely beautiful, and I hope you get a chance to see it. And Pamela Newman, associate engineer, was making, working with her, was making this project a success. We also like to thank attorney Jessica Gillette for coordinating this event. We hope that you all attend, the community of Morro Bay attend. We have dignitaries that will be there. Some of our guest speaker is Alec Farboz. He's a retired professor from San Francisco State and Filipino- He's retired professor from San Francisco State and Filipino history. Stacy Salinas from UC Davis, the Filipino history will be there. We have some folk dancing by the slow Filipino community. We have a performance from Los Angeles, a couple that's going to come and perform. They have the ronda la, the ronda la is where they play the guitar and the mandolin that will be performing. One of our members that catered will be selling Filipino food, pork adobo, if you like adobo and ponset, and some of the Filipino dessert. And we have an information booth, and I did give you all a copy of the program and information regarding how this determination of the monument. Lastly, National's mission statement is: The mission of the Filipino-American National Historical Society shall be to promote understanding, education, enlightenment, appreciation, and enrichment through the identification, gathering, preservation, dissemination of the history and culture of the Filipino-Americans in the United States. And we have 42 chapters nationwide, from New York to Hawaii. We thank you again for this honor. It's a big pleasure to be here tonight, and we hope that we see you all on the 22nd. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalie. Appreciate it very much. Looking forward to that event. Our last proclamation this evening. And Chief McCray and staff, if you're here, come on up to the podium. I'm wondering if the department is still open. Looks like we've got them all here, Dan. This is a proclamation of the City Council of the City of Morro Bay declaring October 9th through 15th, 2022, as National Fire Prevention Week, and recognizing the Morro Bay Fire Department's participation in supporting the ELISA and RUC Burn Foundation and Firefighters in School Education Program, or FISE, F-I-S-E. And it reads as follows: Whereas the City of Morro Bay, California, is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting Morro Bay. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are in locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas home fires caused 2,580 civilian deaths in the United States in 2020, according to the National Fire Protection Association. And fire departments in the United States responded to 356,500 home fires. Amazing. Whereas smoke alarms send smoke well before you can, alerting you to the danger in the event of fire in which you may have as little as two minutes to escape safely. And whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas Morro Bay residents should be sure everyone in the home understands the sounds of the smoke alarms and knows how to respond. And whereas Morro Bay residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas Morro Bay residents will make sure their smoke and carbon monoxide alarms meet the needs of all their family members, including those with sensory and/or physical disabilities. And whereas Morro Bay's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection, education. And whereas residents that are responsive to public education measures are better able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. Whereas in 2022 Fire Prevention Week theme, Fire Won't Wait, Plan Your Escape, effectively serves to remind Morro Bay it is important to have a home fire escape plan. Whereas the Morro Bay Fire Department will participate in partnership with the ELISA and RUC Burn Foundation in the Firefighters in Safety Education, or FISE, program at Delmar Elementary, educating over 500 children in fire safety. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Morro Bay does hereby proclaim October 9th through 15th, 2022, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community, and we urge all people of Morro Bay to plan and practice a home fire escape for Fire Prevention Week 2022, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Morro Bay's Fire Department. And Chief McCray and staff, we can't thank you enough for all that you do, especially proactively educating our children, such an important thing to keep them safe and out of harm's way. And Chief, if you'd like to say a few words, appreciate it.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mayor and City Council. So Fire Prevention Week began in 1925 as a proclamation by President Calvin Coolidge, and it occurs every week, the week of October 9th. And this makes it the longest-running public health campaign in the United States' history. It's done the week of October 9th to commemorate the great Chicago Fire of 1871 that killed over 250 people and left more than 1,000 people homeless. The mission behind this for this year is that fire won't wait, plan your escape, and it is a focus on home evacuation planning. In honor of that, the crew today went to Delmar Elementary School and did a presentation for approximately 325 students that focused on identification of smoke detectors, testing them, and planning home escape plans. Also in coordination of this week, we will be participating in the ELISA and RUC Burn Foundation Burn Relay on Thursday, and they'll be traveling around the county, going from school to school, and they will make a stop at Delmar Elementary School. This is the 50th anniversary of the Burn Foundation and the 30th anniversary of our county participating in it. In honor of that, the Morro Bay Firefighter Association will be making a donation of $750 to the Burn Foundation. And during the Morro Bay Maritime Museum, the donations that we received during the Chowder Contest totaled $38.85, and we will be donating that to the Burn Foundation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you to all of your staff, those that are here and those that couldn't be here, for the great work that you do and for keeping our community safe. Appreciate it. Okay, that completes our presentations, proclamations for this evening. With that, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is general public comment for items on the agenda for which you cannot stay, or items that you generally like to speak to regarding the community. I'm going to go ahead and go through our speaker slips first and then open it up to see if anybody else would like to offer up a public comment. So first up, Sharon O'Leary. Sharon, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, and staff. I wanted to mention that we took note of your comments during the Candidates Forum when you mentioned the five-year strategic plan by the county to end homelessness in our area. So it seemed like a good time to kind of point out some of the things that we've done that are available by way of good data in our efforts to address homelessness and folks in need in Morro Bay. Down at Morro Bay Community Dinner, we have three programs that are active. One of them is the San Luis Food Bank Coalition. They're serving 400 to 500 pounds of food every week through the Community Dinner Program. The Community Dinner itself has to date served 457 meals to 30,170 people over a nine-year period. We now have a donation group that brings in tons of donations from the community by way of clothing, shoes, and essentials. And then the outreach effort by the Community Resource Office. We have case management by Capsule and TMA. We have the California Lifeline Telephone Program, as well as free haircuts from time to time from Mike's Barber, and the several other programs like the Los, San Luis Obispo Last Foundation. This effort has gone on for nine years, also going along the same amount of time, which is nine years. In attendance has been the Astero Bay Are You OK Program, which was just developed recently during the pandemic. That generates a report that goes to City Manager every month, and I think you get a chance to get a copy of it as well. Also, one effort recently is our working with Kirk Carmichael and Los Osos Cares to support the Girls and Boys Club coming to Morro Bay and renovating the teen center and having that opportunity for our kids. So this is just a bit of an update on what's going on around Morro Bay. There are all kinds of other efforts in the neighborhoods and whatnot. We're looking forward to participating in some way with our efforts to address or partner with the county in their efforts to work on that strategic plan to end homelessness in our county. Thank you.
Thank you, Sharon. Appreciate all that you do for our community. Thank you so much. Next up for public comment is Linda Quezenberry. Welcome, Linda.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council and the city staff. My name's Linda Quezenberry, and I'm the Executive Director of Los Osos Cares, nonprofit which started six years ago. I have to say, our organization has one staff, and I'm not that. I think I'm the only executive director who's volunteer for six years. But we have many volunteers. Everything we do is run on volunteers. We started with a community coalition in Los Osos, which invited members of our community to figure out what would be the most important things that we needed, and what they decided was poverty, and we needed resources. That was six years ago. Within that time, we opened up a resource center in Los Osos, where we've probably served over 5,000 people since we've opened. And our organization serves Los Osos, Morro Bay, and Cayucas. So we are serving the Astero Bay. We have, like I say, we have our resource center that we work really close with Sharon O'Leary at the Resource Connections here in Morro Bay. We have a FEI Community Dinner that we started about four years ago, very much like the one here in Morro Bay. And right now, because of our dignity grant, we're partners with the Lions Club, who also do the community dinners here. And I'd like to say I'm really proud of these dinners. In our county, I think we're the only cities that have dinners every week. And we serve probably 100 in Los Osos and 100 in Morro Bay every week, you know, every week. So that's 200 people that get free dinners. Our senior programs, we started an Are You OK program, which Sharon just brought up. We have team members in Los Osos, Morro Bay, and Cayucas. They each have their own phone number, so the people in their community can reach them directly. We did this because Los Osos does not know what Cayucas needs or Morro Bay. So basically, we have people in those communities who are helping, and that program has gone skyrocketed. And we do food distribution, we've reached out in the mobile home parks, and we're having seniors helping each other a lot. It's been one of our best programs. Another program that we have is Women Aid Astero Bay, which helps community members with emergency funding and basic needs. And between Women Aid Astero Bay and Los Osos Cares Immediate Funds Grants, we've been able to help probably about 50 people a month. And those are people who need help with utilities, everything's, oops, circles my time, right? Okay, I just want to say again that one of the things I want to mention is that we are working on a Latino health fair that will be happening at the Iglesia Lenguaje Escogido in Morro Bay. I've been working on that with the Dignity Health, Latino Health Coalition, and we're working really hard to get help to all the underserved Latinos in our cities and make sure that they get information for all services.
Thank you, Linda. Thank you so much for all the work that you do. Appreciate that. Next up is Bill LaFaye. Welcome, Bill.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. My name is Bill LaFaye, and I'm on the committee that is supporting Measure B 22, the 120-year parcel tax to pay for the major maintenance and replacements of the harbor infrastructure. This is the revetments, seawalls, piers, docks, harbor walk, the things that you don't see. And I have a little slide that I'd like Dana to just show the public and yourself what
So as you can see, there is a lot of existing damage that we don't see, most people don't see, that needs to be fixed. It's like the foundation of a house, and if we don't maintain it and we don't pass this measure, we will be liable, and there is no other alternative right now. We've been talking about this for the last 10, 20 years. I'm a former member of the Harbor Advisory Board, and we talked about this when I was the chair 10 years ago. We need the parcel tax right now to have a revenue source for the harbor that's permanent and forever. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Next up for public comment is Bob Keller. Welcome back, Bob.
Mayor, councilmen, staff, the hard-working staff we have in Morro Bay and all of Morro Bay citizens. I'm here to talk about the Morro Bay Maritime Museum. We had our first annual event this last Saturday, and for those of you who didn't attend and were in town, missed a great event. Councilman Heller was there, the staff was there, Councilman Ford. And it was a very fun family event, alcohol-free, and everybody still had a good time without alcohol. So anyway, we had lots of exhibits, and one of the best exhibits, I thought, we had was the Selenian Tribe of Monterey and San Luis County. It was awesome, and we had a lot of extra good exhibits also. But they were outstanding, and they had a full house from the time we started to the end, and the kids were still working on projects as I left. And also, our turnout was awesome. We stopped counting after 1,200, and I don't know how many people we had, but it was very successful. Well, the main reason I'm here is to say something about the Maritime Museum. We need more support from the city and the community, because we're growing fast faster than we thought we would, and we can't keep up. We're running out of space. So we'd like to have everybody get involved with our Maritime Museum, because on Google Travel, the rock is number successful. Well, the main reason I'm here is to say something about the Maritime Museum. We need more support from the city and the community because we're growing fast faster than we thought we would, and we can't keep up. We're running out of space. So we'd like to have everybody get involved with our Maritime Museum because on Google Travel, The Rock is number-one attraction. We're number-two. So what does that tell you? This is a very good organization, and it's run by some hard-working people, Bonnie Jones, Scott Mayer. I got to look at my notes. Anyway, it's Judy Salamachi, Neil Farrell, Bill Steele, Dana McClish, Jeff Heller. And anyway, I still have time. I can't believe it. Also, we always ask for volunteers because, I'll tell you, when you volunteer for this organization, you meet people from all over the world. And it is something else, I can't believe it. You get an education, people talk to you, and you learn a lot about what's going on in the world. And I think that if we can get everybody to join, be a member, would be great. Only $50 a year. Think a bar bill would cover that, wouldn't it? Anyway, I just want to tell you that I think this is a great organization. I've been with us since it started. I'm a charter member. We have charter members on our crew, and then we want everybody to join and come and be with us as a family. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Next up for public comment is Aaron Oaks. Welcome, Aaron.
Thank you, Council and staff. My name is Aaron Oaks from Morro Bay. Before this election season went underway, I heard from members of the community, residents from both sides of the political aisle, those who support city leadership and those who don't. Despite differences in opinion on certain issues, we are unified by economic hardship, and we are all keenly aware of the uncertainty the city leadership continues to foster. We, as individuals, can elect candidates we believe will guide us through that uncertainty. However, unless significant reform takes place, the city of Morro Bay and the way they govern will remain fundamentally and systemically flawed. We've heard consistently from residents who have expressed concerns about large-scale infrastructure projects, like the proposed Vistra lithium battery storage facility, which is being haphazardly fast-tracked without residents receiving proper notice pursuant to state law. Despite the project's usage of experimental, easily combustible, and unstable lithium ion chemistry, despite the project being cited in a key economic zone and a tsunami zone, the city of Morro Bay has worked closely with Vistra to bring forward an egregiously problematic project that is uniquely unfit for our community. The city will tell you that they are simply following a lengthy and elaborate process. But if developers believe Morro Bay is uniquely susceptible to projects that harm the environment and are incompatible with our community's character, whether it's the battery storage facility or the proposed development of hundreds of new housing units in a geologically hazardous location, what does that say about our process? What does that say about our city leaders who support that process? Morro Bay is not an experiment. Residents should not be experimented on by a city that lays subservient to special interest. Thank you.
Thank you, Aaron. Next up is Linda Winters. Welcome, Linda.
There's too many tall people in this town. Mayor, Council, staff, the chiefs, and you. Okay. I'm Linda Winters, 28-year resident in one of Morro Bay's mobile home parks. For those of you that know anything about me, you know that I come to every single council meeting to learn as much as I can about the goings-on within the city. I do this so that when mobile home residents here in Morro Bay ask me about issues here, I can give them the best information I have gathered. I've been doing this for five years now. So when I found out about the Candidates Forum on October 5th, I was very excited to learn as much as I could about each and every candidate. I was pleased to see how many residents came to witness the same thing I did. It was a packed house. The format was a bit different from those done in the past, better for the audience. The candidates panel was facing directly into the audience on the same level. I understand the need to allow the First Amendment, free speech. We all enjoy that freedom. Interesting opinions were bantered about. Everything was okay until almost the end, when one single action changed everything. Those of you that were there know exactly what I'm talking about. I will not glorify that action. I will tell each and every one of you what I felt at that moment. Stark terror. Let me repeat that. Stark terror. I thought I was going to have a heart attack. In my 74 years of existence, I have never felt that kind of fear. My two questions to the powers that be, why was there no security in place for that meeting of this size? And whose responsibility is it? Was it the League, the Chamber, the City Council to provide security? I will continue to come to all of these meetings as I have in the past, but I will never look at our little town in the same way again.
Thank you, Linda. Wave your hand, please. Thank you. And let's see, I have John Elliott. John, welcome.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, staff. My name's John Elliott, Morro Bay resident. Today, I'm here to tell everyone about the 8th Annual Morro Bay Trick-or-Treat Event. This year, it's Saturday, October 29th, from 2:00 to 5:00 p.m. Maps will be handed out at Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street at the City of Morro Bay Recreation Table, starting at 2:00 p.m. on the 29th, and it'll show participating businesses. There will be a closed-off festival area at Morro Bay Boulevard and Main Street with games, bounce house, face painting, haunted trolley, haunted house, Whitecaps Band, and trunk-or-treat of businesses and organizations. Businesses and organizations in the downtown area or outside wanting to be on the map can sign up at morrochamber.org under the Events link calendar. Just click on October 29th and fill out the form. The deadline for signups is October 20th, and so far, we have over 40 businesses and organizations signed up. Special thanks to the City of Morro Bay, the Chamber of Commerce, and 973 The Rock for supporting this event, as well as all the great organizations and businesses. I've left a few flyers in the back that can be posted at your business or organization, and I'll be back probably in two weeks to talk one more time about it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate that. And next up for public comment is John Weiss. Welcome, John.
Good evening, honorable citizens, staff, Council, and Mayor. My name is John Weiss, resident and business owner in Morro Bay. I've had the privilege of attending quite a few council meetings for the past 20 years, not so much lately. On May 3rd, 2021, WRF roadwork started on Quintana Road and Main Street with the promise that the work would take six weeks. The roadwork included that one or both lanes were closed continuously. In reality, it took six months, not six weeks. As a result, in-store sales were reduced by more than 20%. Some businesses, like Lemos Pet Supplies, have been impacted even more. Surprisingly, for some businesses on Quintana Road, the construction delays have had greater negative impacts than even the pandemic. Two years ago, the Council emphatically stated that the WRF would not exceed $126 million, which seems like a lot of money even then. However, this becomes yet another broken promise, as the WRF is now at $160 million and climbing. We would learn, could learn, a few lessons from leadership in Cayucas. For example, their WRF was completed both on time and on budget. They also had the forethought to incorporate solar for powering their facility. For some reason, we chose not to do so in this community. Why? While we may not always agree, I think we all know that we want what is best for Morro Bay. This election cycle, I'm asking Morro Bay citizens to vote for Carla Wickson for Mayor, Zara Landstrom, and Sarah Robinson for City Council. Please be well and have a good meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next up for public comment is David Durringer. David, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, and staff. I request repeal of Ordinance 644, passed unanimously about a year ago. I know from running for council that very few people in this town, from talking with them, very few people even know about this law, and even fewer plan to follow it. It requires that firearms be locked up and unavailable for self-defense, with very few exceptions. It's a clear violation of NYSRPA v. Bruin. That's the Supreme Court case last June that clarified the standard of review. The Ordinance 644 is not consistent with this nation's historical tradition of firearm regulation, specifically the period from 1791 to 1868. That's what the court specified in that decision. There's no historical basis for this type of control, prevent people from using their firearms at home for self-defense. The law was passed unanimously, even though it's obviously unconstitutional. I think the city got some very bad advice from staff council. But the standard is now crystal clear since the Bruin case. The law should be repealed. I also request that every council member actually train with firearms, because if you trained with firearms, you would know how ridiculous these laws are. For example, I know you're considering other methods of gun control from reading the minutes last year. Magazine capacity limits, I think there's, you're suggesting some kind of resolution in support of those. You just train a little bit with firearms, and you know that those don't make any sense. They actually help the attacker and they hurt the defender. Even though we are relatively safe here, violence does happen in Morro Bay. Recent slashing, for example, a man's face was badly slashed a couple weeks ago. The city doesn't need the liability that will come from this law. Residents are entitled to defend themselves. Repeal this unconstitutional ordinance, please. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Next up is Tim Crowley. Welcome, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council, all the city staff, and whoever else is up here. On the rare occasion that I do come to one of these city council meetings, I usually stand in the back. But last Wednesday, I talked my wife into coming here with me for the Candidates Forum, and we got a seat right up front, probably about right there, and I am not going to do that again. I mean, at first, with his talk about China and guns and the mean streets of Morro Bay, David Durringer was kind of amusing, like a comedy break between all the candidates. A real-life Trump jump, not 20 feet away from me and my wife. And I was taking notes during his final comments, and when he said something about only getting a yard sign if he took firearm trainings, I laughed out loud, and then the room inhaled. And I looked up, and he was putting a gun down on the table. He said it was fake, but I don't know that. You don't know that. Nobody checked. But I do know that Durringer is a lawyer, and he probably figures he can get away with what he did. And I don't know if he has a license to carry a concealed weapon in this town. But I do know, after that stunt he pulled last week, if he does, he shouldn't. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim. And next up for public comment is Rachel Wilson. Welcome, Rachel.
My name is Rachel Wilson, and I'm here to say I support BES, but it does not need to be in a population center. So I'm going to go over a few safety facts. $11 million, that is the amount that actuaries say a young life is worth. $450,000, the amount of property tax revenue you expect to receive per year. 25 years, the years of property tax revenue it would take to pay for one life. One out of six, the odds that a lithium storage facility will have a major failure, including a fire that releases toxic gases. These are so expected that after a major fire with LG batteries, which are the same type that Vistra plans to put here in Australia in June of 2021, that the CEO of Vistra admitted that they expected fires. He said, "They are no different than any technology that's new. There's always growing pains in new technology." The question is, would you get in a car if you knew that there was a 1-in-6 chance that it could catch on fire? Or in an airplane with a 1-in-6 chance of crashing? Yet, these are the odds that the proposed plant in Morro Bay could have a major failure. Nine months, from opening, the amount of time it took for the Vistra plant at Moss Landing to have a failure. Five months, the amount of time from opening that it took for the Tesla batteries, virtually identical to the LG batteries, at Moss Landing to catch on fire. Now, you've got to realize Moss Landing only has 50 people within a three-mile radius. Moss Landing was told they could not have a school within a quarter mile. 10 minutes, the amount of time that FEMA says that it takes hydrogen fluoride from a lithium battery fire to be toxic. 66 feet, firefighters are not allowed to get within 66 feet of a lithium fire, even wearing rebreathers and hazmat suits. 520 feet, the distance from the proposed plant to Highway 1. 300 feet, the distance to the estuary. One-quarter mile, the distance from the proposed Vistra plant to Morro Bay High School. One-and-a-quarter miles, the distance to Delmar Elementary. Nine hours, the amount of time that Moss Landing had to put their schools in shelter and place lockdown without batteries. 10 minutes is toxic. How do you expect to protect Morro Bay, the estuary, and the beach?
Thank you, Rachel. Next up is Gary Johnson. Welcome, Gary.
Gary Johnson, a resident of Morro Bay. The mayor was there, too, at the event. Anyway, Mayor, City Council, city manager, and especially our Fire Department and our Police Department. I am so disturbed about how outside huge companies like Vistra and others can come into our small town. And for the people that, excuse me, forgot to put my glasses in. Whenever they want with their political... For example, right now, Istra Corporation is in the process of forcing Morro Bay to build a lithium ion storage facility. We, the people of Morro Bay, will fight back. What is Vistra is planning? Vistra is proposing 86 lithium ion storage modules on-site. Inside each module, there is 2,400 battery racks. Times 86 comes to 201,000 battery racks, plus the components, which is the most important part, that support... part, that supports the inside of each module. This would be the world's largest lithium storage system on the planet. Nothing like this has ever been built before. There are so many issues with this kind of system that I cannot be answered in three minutes. The infrastructure will have many intermittent failures that force evacuation of our town, like Moss Landing, where now they have protocol to evacuate one-mile radius when another problem occurs in that site. Failure analysis? As an engineer analysis engineer in the space program for over 30 years at Lockheed, my opinion is the probability of a lithium failure storage system is far greater than And what I am trying to say, remember, there has been a factor, a facility built this large in the world. Can you imagine a little town in Morro Bay? In my opinion, with the people of Morro Bay, we will be used as guinea pigs. This is not on the ballot November 8th, but I am telling you, not how to vote, that's not my purpose. Just find out who is favor and who is against the project. Then it's up to you to vote your conscience. And I can't believe how serious I feel inside about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Gary. Next up for public comment is Deborah Howell. Welcome, Deborah.
Thank you, Mayor, and City Council and city staff. My name is Deborah Howell. I am vice president of South Bay Women's Network, a 501(c)(3) organization. We started 39 years ago with a mission to service each other through mentorship and networking, and also to serve the community. Our membership includes women from the Estero Bay communities of Los Osos, Morro Bay, Cayucas, and Cambria. Dawn's been one of our speakers at one of our luncheons. Thank you, Dawn. For 24 years, we have raised money to support women by donating to Sand Strong, now known as Lumina Alliance, and through our scholarship program. Our scholarship program is focused on under-resourced women who are reentering school at Questa Community College to further their education. Our scholarships provide financial aid to those women who are often single moms, working full-time, and going back to school. Along with the financial aid, we have a message for these women. We see you. We recognize your struggles. We support you, and we believe in you. Tonight, I am here to personally thank Chris Newmeyer and the law firm of Alshire &amp; Winter for their generous donation of $500 to our scholarship program. Chris, thank you very much for your contribution to our Central Coast community. If you want to know more about our organization, South Bay Women's Network, you can go to our website, S as in SAM, BWN.org. And if you want to donate, you can do that at our website, or attend our fundraiser, October 29th, a Halloween party. And I'll leave these with you to go into the minutes, if that's okay. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Deborah. Next up for public comment is Betsy Gardett-Cross. Welcome, Betsy.
Hi, I'm Betsy Gardett-Cross, and I am new to Morro Bay, and I didn't come prepared to talk tonight, but I have been talking to a lot of people. I was about the lithium power plant, storage plant, and I just feel very strongly against putting that plant here. I know that, I was at an AAUW meeting last week, and they had a guest speaker, and his name was John Lindsay. He is a retired Diablo nuclear power plant person and engineer. And he spoke, I had some questions about the power plant, even though he's not really connected, but he is more knowledgeable than I am on this. And he was mentioning how, you know, I was wondering, is there another place you can put it? Why do we have to put it there? And I've heard one argument about the generating station, all the wires are there, and it would be more convenient or something. Believe me, I really don't know anything about it, but I just, he was mentioning that there is that same facility in Buttonwillow, Kettlemans City. Those places are not surrounded by a beautiful little touristy fishing village. And I just envision these ugly buildings, I've seen the rendering, and it just, it's just ugly to have right there. Everybody will be going by it, because they all go to the Rock if they are tourists. And I just hope that this isn't a done deal. I feel, you know, a lot of people feel that it's a done deal, but I hope that you're listening to your community and will tell Vista to go someplace else. Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy. And let's see, public comment is still open. Anybody else in the audience wish to speak? Yes, welcome. Linda.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Heading and council members, Heller, Ford, Addison, Barton, staff, and people watching at home. My name is Linda Merrill. I've lived here for 40 years. I want to thank Linda Winter and Tim Crowley for speaking up. I felt the same. We don't need this in Morro Bay. Our peace has been violated. Just a couple of words in praise of you, Mayor Heading, you council members, and our wonderful, hard-working staff. I'm awestruck at the amount and quality of work you do for our city and citizens. I appreciate your efforts to keep this city viable and prepared for the future while maintaining the everyday nuts and bolts of the city. You always face problems head-on. Here is a partial list of your accomplishments. Council adopting four major goals. Manager Collins addressed all of our infrastructure needs. COVID impacted all of our community, but everyone joined together to deal with a serious epidemic. Our city staff and volunteers continue to coordinate with Flow County and Public Health Department. Our county's EOC helping our worker force, volunteers, and citizens to reduce the spread of COVID. Our smart fire department recently received two new Zoll cardiac monitors. The Coleman Park Improvement Project was recently awarded $600,000. Water reclamation facilities, we are about to complete the biggest, most complex public works project in the city's history. Our employees received approval of a loan to amount to $61 million from EPA. Didn't hear a lot of praise from the audience from that. Plus, an additional $5 million grant. Both loans were locked in with a near-historical interest rate of 0.9% or under. Good job, everyone. Design work continues on our injection wells. Kids' clubs is most important to care for children before and after school. Key capital projects, One Water Project, city street safety improvements, planning and capital assessments. Our citizens pass major E&amp;O, funded police, fire, park, and waterfront maintenance workers and part-time harbor and lifeguard positions. Pavement rehabilitation. Work is in progress on a $50 million ADA improvements. Pod holes gone from the Rock parking lot, transit hub, and the Army Corps of Engineers' Dread Ship Kinta came once again. My sincere appreciation for all you do for us. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Linda. Public comment is still open. Any member of the public wishing to speak on any item on the agenda or not? Come on down. Betty, welcome.
Good evening. My name's Betty Winholz, and I will also refer to the forum the other night, but on a different topic. It was mentioned by candidate Heading and by candidate Edwards that we have gotten into trouble with our harbor fund due to the loss of the power plant back in the 10, 12 years ago. And I have for 10 years come before council, and I will continue to do that, because that issue has been, was corrected when Mayor Peters and her council, of which I was a member, we knew ahead of time that plant was closing. We, for three years, planned to whittle down that budget, so we would make up and be a balance for that. And yet, it continues to be used as an issue for why we need to do, for example, Measure B-22. So I would like, at some point, for both elected and appointed staff to stop using that as an excuse for why we need money. We left you with the budget that was in the black. The next council did something different, and so that may be something else. But I just need to every time remind us that that was not a result of the power plant closing, in my opinion, and because of our due diligence at the time. I also am a member of Citizens for Affordable Living, and we're the ones that are the opponents to Measure B-22, as Mr. LaFaye was a proponent of B-22. And we absolutely support the concept that the harbor needs money, and that the harbor needs attention. But for all the items that he showed you on the screen, my question becomes, why has that been allowed to deteriorate over the last eight to 10 years? When you knew that was happening, and yet staff did not either bring it to your attention or you knew it, you as the council, and you did nothing about it. So for us to get to this point where you're expecting the residents to put on their backs in the midst of a coming recession with every other bill going up, and you want us to pay property tax that goes up every year, not connected to a certain percentage, and is unending because it takes the vote of the people to put it back on the ballot, that's not likely. So we find that unfair. And so we know that there are other resources that can be used to help our infrastructure, and we encourage the council to look at those. And we've identified those, and we've put them out in our newsletter, and we hope that people will attend to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Betty. Public comment is still open. Any members wishing to come? Casey, welcome.
Hi, Mayor, councilors. Yeah, my name's Casey Cordes. I live in Morro Bay. I just wanted to briefly speak in favor of something that we've talked about briefly, not directly before this council, but that is the increased height restrictions for the downtown business district. About three weeks ago, the Planning Commission voted to send to you a recommendation that they would like to do some additional research around this topic, rather than make a formal recommendation as part of their revised zoning ordinances across the city. That, I don't believe, has come before you yet. I would encourage that when that does come before you, you can make the decision to blanket approve this item, rather than sending it back for continued research. I think that this is something that's important for the future of our city. I have heard, you know, some concern about how this might change the character of our town, that this height increase might do damage to the way we experience the city. The way I see it is that town is going to change. It is changing today. In two years, the city will be 60 years old, and you can bet that we have a different city today than we had 60 years ago. This is the way of the world. What concerns me is, is it changing accidentally, or is it changing on purpose? Are we dealing with developers who find loopholes in our zoning ordinance to, you know, add motels or hotels? Or are we purposefully looking at our city and saying, "This is where the future will be. This is where some change can come." And how will that affect us as neighbors and residents and business owners and such? So what I would say is that it is totally fine to go back and allow them to do research on that. They are very thorough people, and I'm sure they'll do a great job. But I would also encourage you to maybe say, "We've seen enough of our city and the way that things are changing that we can add a few feet to the maximum height requirement for some buildings in our downtown district to have a very minimal impact on the views of people who live in the surrounding area, because it will have a net benefit. It will bring some new housing. It will bring mixed commercial buildings, and that will be positive for our whole community." Thank you very much.
Thank you, Casey. Public comment is still open. Any member of the public wishing to come forward? Please do so now. Seeing none, AGP, do we have anybody on the phone for public comment this evening?
We have, we have one raised hand.
Okay.
From a Melanie Mahon. My apologies if I mispronounced your last name, but you are now allowed to speak.
Welcome, Melanie.
Hi, it's Melanie Williams-Mahan. I'm calling in tonight to talk to you guys about, again, the energy storage system. I looked up the biggest energy storage systems worldwide, and number one is Vistra Moss Landing Energy Storage Facility. Number two is the Manatee Energy Storage Center Project in Florida. Number three is Victorian Big Battery in Australia. Number, let's see, where am I? Four is McCoy Solar Energy Project in California. It doesn't say exactly where that is. And then five is the Elkhorn Battery, and that's in California as well. Out of these five, the only one that has had any problems that are mentioned in this article is the Vistra Battery Storage in Moss Landing. And it's soon to be the biggest battery storage in the world, but they've already had, as of this article, which was in September, I think it was three shutdowns so far, and they had to go back to the plate. But my point is, is that, you know, the Moss Landing one is far enough away that it is from the general public. They still had to evacuate their schools, they still had to evacuate all this. If this is in the middle of Morro Bay, I don't understand how we are going to get people out of this area safely. And, you know, we only have one fire department, because we all know what happened to the lot that the other fire department was supposed to be on. So between the houses that we're putting in and this Vistra Battery Storage, I don't understand how the fire department's going to keep the rest of us safe. So I think this is, it's, to me, it's unthinkable that we're even considering this because of the danger to people in our community. And what tourist is going to want to come to, to look at a bay where there's a chance that you might not even make it out? I mean, this is just, this just seems ridiculous to me. So very short-sighted. But that's all I have to say. Thank you, and yeah, I don't understand this, but we'll see.
Thank you, Melanie. AGP, is there any other public comment?
There are no more raised hands.
All right, thank you. We'll close public comment, bring it back to council. One item, Chief, if you could address, or Mr. Collins, I think the general comment that was made regarding perhaps the use of the vets facility, and it was specifically the candidates' event that was sponsored by Chamber and the League of Women Voters, not sponsored by the city. But the concern that was raised and maybe our policy on when we staff events and when we don't staff events is kind of where I'm going. Does that make sense?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I don't believe that there's a policy that dictates that there is, as was mentioned, security at all of our public events. I attend all of these city council meetings as part of the city manager's management team, and we do on occasion attend other events, but most public events, as in advisory meetings, do not require the mere presence of law enforcement or security. We've not had any incidents in the recent past that I am aware of that have dictated the need for that, nor has the department received any requests to have a security presence at those types of meetings.
Thank you, Chief. I appreciate that. Okay. That brings us to our consent agenda this evening. Items A1 through A6. And I'll go ahead and open up public comment for consent agenda only. Anybody wishing to speak on any of the items, A1 through A6, please come on in. Anybody wishing to speak on any of the items, A1 through A6, please come forward now. Seeing none. AGP, do we have anybody on the phone for consent public comment?
We have no raised hands.
All right, thank you. I'll close public comment, bring it back to the council. Any items to pull?
A3.
A3? You bet. That's Member Heller for A3. Got it? Any others? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve all items but A3, except A3, I should say.
I'll move approval of all the items on the consent agenda minus A3.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have motion and second to approve all consent items except for A3. Any further comments or discussion? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on that.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. Councilmember Heller, A3, sir. Thank you.
Question for Director Endersby. Is this the grant that we typically apply for once a year to take care of these situations?
Sorry, new microphone style here. Didn't know where the button was. Yes, it is. We typically get these either every year, every other year, kind of depending on how our funds last throughout the season.
And do we have any other funds available for this need?
We used to budget in our operating budget to take care of these derelict boats, but when this grant program came along from Boating and Waterways probably 20 years ago now, it's a plan that our need to have to budget our own funding, which has been great, so we've been relying on the state for this funding.
Okay. When I look around the harbor, it seems to me that there are more than one or two abandoned slash surrendered vessels and hazards to navigation. Is that a fair assessment, or do you think one a year is enough for our needs?
One grant per year?
Yeah, because it seems like there are a lot of boats when I look at them, and I'm not a, you know, an expert on this by any means, but it seems like there are a number of boats in our bay attached to moorings that appear to be abandoned or surrendered vessels. Could you define that for me?
I guess beauty is in the be holder with vessels. We generally, when we apply for the grants, we take runs, you know, our patrol staff have a pretty good idea, you know, what's being up kept, what's not, who's going into arrears. Typically, when boats become derelict problems or when they stop paying their bills, whether they're on our facilities or somebody else's, and we become aware of those. We identify those, and when it comes time to apply for this grant, we have a general idea, you know, okay, there's that boat, that boat, that one, and that one. All right, that's about this much money that we'll need in funding. We apply for that amount, plus a little bit in grant funding, and right now, we've, you know, 15,000 is what we applied for. That'll take care of, depending on boat size and how complicated, you know, how big the boat is and what it's built of, that'll take care of three to five vessels. Yeah, there's a lot of boats out there that look abandoned or are not in very well-kept shape, but there's really not a lot that are out there on moorings or in slips that are truly abandoned that we're not aware of and taking action on. Like I said, if, for instance, there's a boat at Marina Square that falls into arrears with the operators of that lease site, they, as the renters there and taking care of that lease site, they have to deal with going through a lien process. If, like, you know, you stop making your payments on your house, it's a lien process. You stop making your payments on a vehicle, same thing. Same thing with a boat. The operator there can go after the owner for the asset through a lien process. They will typically do that, and then they'll turn it over to us if they acquire that out of a lien process, and we will budget for that through the DBW process. So we kind of keep our eyes on it all to try and deal with everything we see coming down the line.
Okay, so besides paying the monthly amount for the mooring, is there any kind of annual seaworthiness test or any way to find out if they're, you know, dumping sewage in the bay or anything like that?
No annual seaworthiness test. Some of our leaseholders require the owners to have insurance, which will carry a higher degree of scrutiny on the vessel, so to speak. A lot of times, the insurance will require periodic survey from a marine surveyor, so that raises the bar higher, and it'll tend to keep boats from falling into dereliction. But, you know, derelict boats are a problem up and down the coast in every single harbor, and we're all dealing with them on a pretty regular basis.
Does the city require insurance for our moorings?
We do not.
Okay.
We've got the fishing boat, commercial fishing boat slips, and then we own about half a dozen of the moorings out in the bay. The rest are all privately run.
And we don't require that they have insurance necessarily?
No, we do not.
Okay, thanks. Those are my questions. Thanks, Eric.
Thanks, Councilmember Heller. I'll move approval of A3.
I'll second.
Okay, motion and second to approve A3. Any further discussion? Good questions, by the way. Thank you. Hearing none, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you. That brings us to our first business item this evening. This is acceptance of the ABC-OTS grant awarded to Morro Bay Police Department. And turn it over to Chief Cox.
Thank you, Mayor Heading and council, for the opportunity to bring this forward on such short notice. Again, as you mentioned, this is for your consideration of acceptance of the ABC-OTS grant that has been recently awarded to the Morro Bay Police Department. The ABC grant is under the Department of Alcohol Beverage Control and operating with the California Office of Traffic Safety, and both of these entities operate under the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. So we applied for this grant in September. This is a competitive grant, so agencies are competing for these available funds to be able to address some of the alcohol-related problems within their jurisdictions. So we looked at what we could feasibly do with our current staffing to address some alcohol-related issues such as licensing, education, and enforcement operations, and what it would cost us to conduct a number of these operations for the remaining 11 months of this available grant, and determined that it would be approximately $24,500, meaning that there would not be any cost to the city for us to be able to conduct these type of enforcement and education opportunities within the city, as it would all be reimbursed under these grant funds. So there's a series of items that the department would conduct in order to address these. Those include issues of underage drinking, the establishments that would sell alcohol either to minors or to obviously intoxicated subjects, impaired driving, and a number of other alcohol-related items to reduce those types of crimes that would occur within the city. We have, like I stated, 11 months left as the grant was awarded for October 1st, so we wanted to get this before you as quickly as we could so we could get busy and kind of make an impact on some of the things that we address daily. Recently, one of our officers was recognized through MAD for their efforts for mothers getting struck and driving. He was awarded for just doing an outstanding and consistent job in alcohol enforcement on our roadways in Morro Bay. And so we do have an alcohol problem that we see, especially being a vacation place where people like to come and have a good time. But this will allow us to address some of those issues without any additional cost to the city. So again, our recommendation is for you to consider adoption of a resolution approving the acceptance of the grant not to exceed a total of $24,500.
Thank you, Chief. Appreciate the rapidity with which you got this through and brought it to us, and thank you for, do you want to say the name of that outstanding officer? Is that all right?
Jason Taugh.
Thank you. I wanted to, I appreciate that.
He's done an exceptional job. He was recently recognized as our Officer of the Year and by MAD for such an outstanding job in DUI enforcement.
That is fantastic. Just a couple of questions I had real quickly. These are just topical questions for me. Are there any dollars here that would specifically go towards education within the schools or that would target young people under the age of 21?
Yes, there are a series of events, so ABC minor decoy operations, what we call shoulder tap operations, and informed merchants preventing alcohol-related crime tendencies, inspections of those locations. And these target both licensed premises and individuals who furnish alcohol beverages to underage subjects. And in addition to that, it provides training, part of the grant funds will provide training to department staff to conduct these operations and for our SRO to provide an educational component within the school.
And I'm sorry, what's a shoulder tap program?
Well, we often see where juveniles will go outside of an alcohol retail business, and they will ask somebody that's going into the store to purchase alcohol for them. They will provide them with the money because they know they're obviously underage. So it allows us to do a series of different types of details addressing that for subjects who may purchase alcohol for subjects that they know are underage 21 because they don't have the ability to buy it themselves. So it allows us to address those things as well.
Makes perfect sense. Thank you. That's all the questions I had. Other questions for Chief Cox? Yes, Councilmember Heller.
Chief, first of all, congratulations on getting this grant. Competitive world, and you've done a great job getting this funding. Shoulder tap, you explained. What is a minor decoy? Can you tell me what that is?
A minor decoy is where we utilize a subject that is under the age of 21, and we send them into the store to purchase alcohol.
I see.
We've done these throughout the past. We've done them multiple times over the years, which I think is what helped in the competitive process of outlining that we've done many of these types of operations in the past and have had success. So if we send an underage decoy into the store and he's able to purchase alcohol from that establishment, then that establishment will be cited for underage sales.
That's great. And then is IMPACT describing a particular program, or what is that?
Yes, IMPACT is the Informed Merchants Preventing Alcohol-Related Crime Tendencies. And those are the inspections that we do within the alcohol retail establishments.
Okay. Thank you very much for those answers.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Interesting, yeah. Any other questions? Yes, Councilmember Ford.
So almost all my questions have been answered now. But I do have one last one, and you may have said this, and I apologize, Chief. When was the last time that we did this training? Did you?
Well, we haven't done it pre-pandemic, so it's been a couple of years since we've been able to do these operations.
Okay, so it's been a little while. Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Okay, seeing no other questions, I'll open up public comment. Public comment for item C-1 is now open. Any member of the public wishing to come forward? Please do so now. Seeing none. AGP, do we have anybody on the line for item C-1?
We have no raised hands.
Okay, I'll close public comment, bring it back to council. Entertain a motion or further discussion?
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 9022, accepting and appropriating funds from the 2022-23 Department of Alcohol Beverage Control Grant for the ABC OTS program in the amount of $24,500 for overtime expenses incurred during the 11-month program as outlined in the staff report.
I'll second it.
We do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, Councilmember Heller.
Just an outstanding job, Chief. We're going to miss you, and thank you for this, getting this on the agenda here, and appreciate all you've done for the department for many years.
Dito, ditto, ditto.
I'd also like to say thank you. And I have to say that I remember in a conversation that I had with the chief before I was on council, and he talked about the importance of training his staff, how valuable that is. And so I just appreciate all the opportunities that you have given your staff over the years and continue to do. So thank you so much.
Great job.
Oh, can I?
Oh, sure, absolutely, yes.
Since we're not short on time right now.
No, go ahead.
But I do want to add that I've learned so much from you, Chief, and I really appreciate the way you've led the police department here in Morro Bay and continued to lead it until your retirement, and just say thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. It's been my privilege.
Okay, we'll go ahead and take a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heading?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Great. That brings us to item C-2, our final business item this evening. This is the Budget in Brief Update and Direction. And I'm going to turn it over to, looks like the city manager.
Yes.
Mr. Collins.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers. City Manager Scott Collins here. Going to give a brief presentation on the budget and brief update and direction from council. So the recommendation is for council to direct staff to utilize the updated budget and brief communication tool, which includes input from the Citizen Finance Advisory Committee, which I'll refer to as CFAC from this point on, to post the document online, disseminate virtually, as well as in the November utility bills, and to utilize this as a template for future budget and brief documents to be created by staff after budget adoption each year. We have several alternatives, which are outlined in the staff report, including creating a CFAC subcommittee to further look into this document and other alternatives. We could eliminate the document altogether or provide alternative direction. So it looks like the PowerPoint has been pulled up. So by way of background, beginning around fiscal year 1920, the CFAC participated with staff in creating a budget and brief document referred to as the Trifold. A lot of really good information, detailed level information on the budget. We used that for several years and then have been successful in receiving GFOA and CSMFO awards for our budget, particularly in how we present to the community to make it transparent and understandable. Since that time, we've been moving towards a more accessible and readable visual communication approach, most recently with the city council goals that were adopted last year, trying to use visualizations and infographics to really distill complicated information into bite-sized pieces of information for community members who are very busy, lots of distractions out in the world, to stay tuned to what's going on in their city, but not have to parse through pages and pages of information to get to the central nugget of what's going on. Fast forward to this current fiscal year budget, we moved to an online platform, gotten away from having to use Excel spreadsheets to create a budget document. Now it all lives online, can still be printed for those who like tactile, like to feel the budget, but it's all online. People can, you know, use different graphs to visually understand what's going on with the budget. A lot more easy to move between departments and understand what's going on at thematic level, which we received over almost 300 views on our website, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it actually is compared to what we've seen in the past. So people are utilizing that online platform. And so ultimately, what we're looking for is how to take that to the next level. And CFAC did ask us earlier this year, next slide, please, to look at various ways of getting the budget summary out to the community. So backing up a little bit, we had 10 public meetings for the budget process this previous year in terms of how we communicate the budget. There's a banner on the way to the city's homepage. We've done press releases and emails to our subscribers, notify me about the budget. We put the budget online. We do hot topics just sort of about what's going on with the budget, Facebook, et cetera, the city manager's updates, and obviously at council meetings and CFAC meetings to really help get the message out. But again, CFAC felt it was important to maybe take a look back at the Trifold and see if there would be a need to push out information to those who aren't actively seeking, you know, information on the website, maybe send it to where they are, and so they can consume it that way. So we started out in April of this year with the Trifold, and staff kind of explained the evolution that we've made internally to make information more digitized, and also bite-sized information. So CFAC continued the item to later in the year. We presented a mock-up of a more infographic-based approach. Got a lot of feedback from the four CFAC members, and they also were interested in maybe forming a subcommittee to help put this together and make some changes. After that meeting, staff met with several CFAC members and those who were on CFAC in the past who created the Trifold, to really understand how we could maybe find a middle ground. Because again, we feel like there's been a shift in how people are consuming information, and going back to a heavily detailed summary maybe defeats the purpose. So what we've brought forward for council consideration is this mock-up, again, which we've shared with some CFAC members and those who used to be on CFAC who have great interest in communicating this information to the public. This is here on digital display, and you also have in your packet the printout of that. But ultimately, what we're trying to show is a very high level of what's going on with the budget, starting with your operating and capital, and then breaking down general fund. fund, because most people are acquainted with your general fund. That's the meat and potatoes of your city government from police, fire on down to administration and what percentage is allocated on the general fund to that. I also highlight that the city has $8.6 million in general fund reserves, which I think is an important thing to communicate since that's been a goal of this council, to beef up our reserves. We take pains to sort of, again, quickly explain that there's enterprise funds as well that are separate from your general fund. That was a key piece that CFAC members felt needed to be pulled out. And so we have the operating budgets of the sewer, water, harbor, and transit funds. And then we have more information that you can be linked to either through a QR code or typing in the URL code so you can get to the city budget and go deep if you want to. Next page, on the reverse side, because CFAC is the overseeing committee of our Measure EQ, we felt it was important to draw that out. And so again, at the high level, we talk about the things that Measure EQ is funding with $4.3 million. And also because there's an emphasis on infrastructure improvements, that's, that's bolded. And then below is the capital improvement budget for this fiscal year. Again, high level, the amount of money being spent, number of projects, and then below is a breakout of the various types of projects that are being funded this year. So again, this isn't gonna tell you everything you need to know, but it's gonna draw you in. You can go to the website very easily from the front page to learn more about our budget. This is an enticing way to get people interested. It's what City of San Luis Obispo and other committees like City Pismo Beach are doing to, to help communicate really important information to their community. And again, we think this would be a good tool to send out in our utility bills. Next page, please. And if we would like to get it out in November, typically try to get this out during the summertime, but we did have lots of discussion with CFAC to try to get this right. We would suggest if this is satisfactory to the council that we would mail it out for the November mailing, our billing, and then use this as the template moving forward. And we would just update the, the template year after year and make slight tweaks where we need it. But again, this is based on the input we received from several CFAC members. And as opposed to going back to CFAC to tweak it even further, I think this is, this is pretty good from our vantage point and again, what a lot of other cities are doing to communicate complicated information. So with that, happy to take any questions. Sarah Johnson-Rios is available on Zoom, I believe, if you ask really hard questions. So, yeah. Thank you.
Good to know. Thanks, Scott. Appreciate the presentation and I don't have any specific questions. Look, yes, Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. So Mr. Collins, you mentioned that this would be the template. So this in the future would go out in the summer, as you were saying?
Yeah, we would, after council approves the budget, we would shortly thereafter kind of, you know, just compile the numbers. It's already there, available. I did, I did forget to mention that there is a transparency module that we'll be rolling out on the ClearGov, which is our platform for the full budget, that there's a way to go beyond the budget to understand finances even more in depth, but then again, easy digestible format. We're still working on this, but we would anticipate using this budget and brief as a standalone document that could be mailed out, could be, you know, kept at City Hall and the other desks in the city, put on Facebook, et cetera.
Okay, great. And I'm going to hold off on my comments on it for the moment. So my only other question is, did you have any pushback from any of the CFAC members? I know obviously they voted to move this forward, but was there any pushback on this new format?
Well, just to be clear, the CFAC meeting, the last meeting we held on this, they wanted to form a subcommittee. So I wanted to be clear that-
Okay.
That was their, that was their direction. We met individually with several of them to under, further, further understand their concerns and I think they wanted to see information broken out further, which we've, we've done. And again, also looked at the City of Slow and this is very much similar to what they had done based on similar input they've received from their community members. So council could send us back to CFAC once more and form a subcommittee, but we feel like this is, this is pretty solid. There's always more information you wanna add. That's, the trick is trying to find the right balance.
Yeah. No, that's great. Great information. But I have some, some comments, but I will hold off on that.
Great. Councilmember Addis, any questions?
Just briefly, so the, the Budgets and Brief would replace the Trifold. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct. Yeah, yeah. The Trifold had, in addition to this, had city goals, it had a lot more narrative and it was front and back, so yeah.
This one, right?
Yeah, you see a lot more, more narrative and a lot more written, written information. This replaces a lot of that through graphs.
And then this would go out, it would be electronic, it would go out on the water bill, QR code and maybe some other-
Right.
-ways to get to it.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I did have a question. I apologize. I will get right over here. I, I did notice on page 78 of 88, on the backside of, of it, you called out the, the amount of $3 million for street paving, which is, I know for this fiscal year, 2.9 or so has been budgeted, which is great. Would it, would it be helpful to put the approximates for the others? I don't know, I mean, it should be pretty easy to do, but my first question would be, it's great they're doing that, but what about bike and pedestrian safety and-
Yeah, we-
Something like that?
We could do that. They would shrink the text on, on every, on all the stuff in there. We, we felt paving received, required a call out just-
Okay.
-because it's been talked about so much in the community.
Sure.
But, you know, we, welcome to take feedback, but we'd love to hear what the full council thinks.
Okay. Yeah, good. All right. Any questions?
Oh, I, just a comment that I like it and I think that graphics are the way to go.
Me too.
It's the way that I think people will sit still long enough and look at it and be attracted by the colors and such that, that would make it digestible to way more people than, than probably look at it now. So I think that's a good, good direction.
Councilmember Heller, yes, sir.
Yeah, where does the QR code take you? To the website or?
It takes, actually, well, is Sarah available?
Looks like the budget.
I did it earlier.
Yeah.
It takes you through the, the budget page on the city.
Yeah, okay.
But Sarah can answer. I want Sarah to, I wanna hear Sarah's voice.
Right.
Sarah, are you there?
I'm here. Good evening. That is the correct answer, Councilmember Ford.
Good, good to hear your voice.
You get a prize.
And then the other question, Scott, I think you mentioned that under hot topics, there's a budget component under there or you periodically put it there or?
Yes, when we, when council, I think usually we do something about, you know, council hearings and then if council's approved the budget, we would put that in. And then other times, if we've received awards, you know, budget awards, we'd put that there.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you. Those are my questions.
Okay.
Okay, I'll go ahead and open up public comment. This is public comment for item C dash two. Any member of the public remaining who would like to come forward, please do so now. Seeing none. AGP, any public comment on the phone?
We have no raised hands.
All right, I'll close public comment and bring them back to council for, I'll entertain a motion and further discussion or comment.
I'll move to approve this item. I think I'm just moving the staff recommendation, right?
Right.
There's not a, yeah. I'll move to approve the staff recommendation.
I'll second that.
And I have comments.
Yeah, and my comment would be, you know, this reminds me of our goals document, which was so much easier to understand and to read quickly and the colors really speak to me. I'm a visual anyway, but I, I really like this and appreciate the changes that have made comparatively, looking at the comparative Trifold, hard to read in the past, a ton of information, but really I think more difficult to understand. This says it in a nutshell and-
Yeah, and I remiss not to thank our assistant city manager, Sarah Johnson-Rios, for working really hard on distilling this and also he's the same local designer who helped us with the, with the goals document.
Got it. Thank you.
Thanks.
Go ahead, Councilmember Ford, did you have?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Johnson-Rios, for preparing this report. I am really excited about the, the format with a marketing background. Of course, I know you only have a few seconds to grab attention of those who are sifting through their mail or going through social media, whatever it is, however they find their information. And so I know it's important to grab their attention quickly and, because not everyone, like you said, Mr. Collins, is, is seeking this information. And so what I love about it is if you are seeking information and you see, it includes the website and the QR codes, you give them two different options to go and get a more in-depth view of what our budget is and where you can find out all that information. So what has been said, you know, the colorfulness of it, it grabs your eye. But I, I just love that with the ad hoc committee and staff, that all the different ways that people find information, the majority of the ways were considered. And when I talk to the community and I ask, when they say, oh, I didn't, I didn't see that, I, I never saw that come across, or I didn't get that information, and I ask them, where, how do you get your information? Most of those items were listed that you, that you put up there. So it's great to see that there is a huge effort to get this information out to people from, you know, all different, different ways that receive information. So thank you for your hard work and I look forward to seeing this in my bill. I don't look forward to the bill, but I look forward to this.
Look forward to your bill, yeah. Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Heller?
Yes, thank you very much for this, Scott and, and Sarah and the CFAC for working on this. I remember when the Trifold came out and that was a quantum leap ahead of what we were doing before then. And Councilmember McPherson was on a subcommittee, I think, and worked with CFAC to make that happen. And I thought, wow, this is great. And I still feel that way. I have the Trifold, you know, in my papers on my desk. And this is another quantum leap ahead here and it's just fantastic. And, you know, you and I have talked about visualization and the reason the, I think there's a lot of discord between citizens and government is how we communicate the information, which can be very complex. And I'm a picture guy, like you, very visually oriented, and people in general are more visually oriented, I think, than they were even 10 years ago. And this is a model really that maybe can be applied to a number of different areas and how we communicate with the public. And it's just an outstanding example. So thank you to you, to CFAC, to, to Sarah Johnson-Rios and everyone else who had input on this. It's just outstanding. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I'll just add, I'm aging myself, but I worked on the Trifold.
Boy, that was a hard time ago.
When I was on CFAC. So I'm really glad to see this because as we worked on the Trifold, I kept thinking how maybe we didn't need to be doing that as CFAC and it would be so nice to have professionals and people who understand how to do this to do it better. And so really glad to see this come forward and glad you're thinking about the different ways that people get their information. I think we, it is late years, though, without removing very quickly, Councilmember Heller.
You have just aged yourself. By the way, speaking about your stint on CFAC. Yeah, yeah, it was a huge improvement. Thanks for those great comments. Thank you, Ms. Johnson-Rios, for being there. And I think for all your work that, that's been mentioned, but thanks for being part of the meeting this evening. And we look forward to you coming back soon in the future. So with that, any other comments? Not, we'll do a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Addis?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Councilmember Heller?
Yes.
Councilmember Barton?
Yes.
And Mayor Heding?
Yes.
Motion carries five oh.
That brings us to item D, council declaration of future agenda items. Right, seeing none. Yes, sir.
I lied last meeting, but I didn't have any. Actually, I lost my piece of paper that had the long list on it. And I found it, typed it out and sent it to Scott and to Dana, just in case, I don't want them to be taking copious notes unnecessarily. So, you know, as I get closer to the end of my term, all of a sudden I start thinking about these things that, oh my gosh, you know, I, I really would like to get this on a future agenda whether I'm here or not. So I'm just gonna go through this list. And the number one is, I'd like to ask staff to work with the police department and report back on a policy regarding weapons, whether they're false or real, at public meetings in any public, in any city facility. I have no idea what the laws are, what our limitations are, but, you know, I agree with a number of public comments that the display at the League of Women Voters Candidate Forum was, was unacceptable. I recognize there are Second Amendment rights to protect the rights of citizens, but I'd like to know what the, what the city can do with respect to developing a policy that would deal with this in an effective manner so that hopefully it doesn't happen again. That's number one. I have 12 items, so make yourself comfortable. Number two is, I don't know if we should vote on these one at a time or how you wanna do this, Mayor. What do you think?
You, okay, sure. Yeah, because otherwise it'll be, we'll have to go back and-
Yeah, then you have to go back and repeat them all, so.
Okay. So the first item is support for, I'm looking at a PD policy on what, just reevaluate weapons, false or real at events in the city.
In any event, in a city facility.
Yeah.
I, I guess I have a question for staff. Is there a natural time, something like this might come forward? I do have a little bit of concern about putting 12 agenda items, future agenda items. And I know this-
This could be way in the future. This is not-
This is just one of many, but, and I don't know what the others are, but I'm wondering if there's a nexus between that and anything else that might come forward where this could weave in. I do like the idea of the public getting a better, better understanding, but I'm concerned in our last meetings, overloading a future council or a futures staff.
Is that a question?
Question for you.
I think the question was, is there a natural place for this specific item to come back? And I'm not sure because I don't think we over-report back on any of the gun safety items, or we don't, right? Yeah, so.
No, is the answer.
Well, no, I'm not saying no to the-
No, he's just talking about, it doesn't fit in.
There is no-
There's not an update where this could naturally weave in.
Yeah.
Okay, so next item.
Do we vote on that?
We don't, we don't vote, but I'm, I don't see anybody supporting this.
I generally would support the idea, but I also am pretty clear about those policies and I don't, personally, if I was on council, I wouldn't feel the need to review them. I'm pretty clear on gun safety issues.
So that's a no in general? Okay.
Could I ask for just a, clarification on what you're asking? So you're asking for, for staff to come back and to let us know what the policy is or what currently we have in place or to create a policy?
I think Chris has a, did you have a, I'm sorry.
Chris, go ahead.
Sure. So I briefly looked into this after the League of Women Voters event. And so there's a penal code right now that one might think is applicable, but it doesn't appear that it would be. Brandishing an imitation firearm that actually looks like a firearm is punishable under state law. There's a clear distinction in there on if it's a bright color like that weapon was or the imitation weapon. So there doesn't appear to be a penal code that applies. So if the city wanted to do something, then I suppose the city could adopt some sort of local ordinance or policy that perhaps would prohibit the use of props in general or imitation firearms at city events. That'd totally be a council decision on whether or not to move forward with that. Another option would be for specifically that forum or any other forum, when a private party uses city property for an event, they could have rules of conduct, rules of policies that they have adopted beforehand. So for example, at the next League of Women Voters event, there could be a rule on no props or even no, you know, imitation firearms brought forward. So as for the intersection with the Second Amendment for dealing with imitation firearms, there need to be some research on this, legal research, but I don't think the Second Amendment would be triggered because it's actually not a firearm. It's an imitation firearm, but further legal research would need to be done. So that might help council with its decision tonight.
Yeah. And, and so part of my concern is maybe we, maybe you could just briefly read the list because I'm worried about constrained resources. I'm also worried about the fact that this is an end of the term kind of a thing for[1787.78] perhaps some, it depends on the election, obviously, but.
This could be two years from now.
This could be two, yeah, and, and having, knowing some of the agenda items that aren't even, haven't been agendized as of yet, there's a, there's a significant number of things that'll be coming forward, but. So we've got the first item, and is there, I'm just looking for any head nods of support for hearing what we've heard, so, okay, no.
Okay, so no on that one. Okay, number two. This is a short meeting, I mean, we have time for this. Got nowhere to go. Okay. The next one has to do with the PD overlay, specifically on the parcel, the Steiner Shepherd Arts property, which was removed during our last meeting, I believe, or the meeting before, when we voted for the upzone. I would like to have staff bring back options or an explanation to the council on how we can get that PD overlay applied to that parcel or those parcels. Maybe that could be done during the draft zoning update, I'm not sure, but I would like that to be addressed. Whether that needs to be a separate item or not, I don't know.
Mr. Graham, would that be part of what you might be bringing back?
When the draft zoning comes before you at the next meeting, because that's when it's scheduled.
Right.
It doesn't propose a land use change to that property. That would be a separate effort that's outside of the zoning code update. The zoning has to match the general plan land use designation for that property. The land use designation was part of the general plan update that you, that the city council approved last year. So those, those things would come back at a later date, so that wouldn't be part of the discussion. The PD overlay and the draft zoning code, again, not before you this evening, but really is just a tool that a developer could choose to apply for in relation to development of that property. So I'm not exactly sure, sorry, Councilmember Heller, what the ask is there. It is a type of permit that you could request, and typically that type, that permit would deal with, and you would use it if you were, the property had constraints on it, and you wanted relief from some of the standard, the development standards that would otherwise apply. You know, like we do setbacks, because there's environmentally a sense of habitat on the property, and you can't develop like you normally would be able to, or something along those lines. So I don't know if I'm talking apples and oranges to Councilmember Heller or not.
Oh, that's okay. That clarifies it, and I'll, and I'll leave it for this draft zoning code.
Okay.
Discussion.
Okay.
That's fine with that.
Thank you.
And this next item might be in a similar boat. The Planning Commission has recommended that we develop a design district in Morro Bay that specifically addresses the development of affordable housing, and I think I've talked with Mr. Collins about it. I just want to make sure that that happens, and I'm not sure what the process is, if the council has to approve it, or if the Planning Commission could take six months, or whatever, however long you think it might take to, to develop that.
So, so yes, Councilmember Heller, that is part of, will be part of the discussion that we bring forward to the city council, because that was a recommendation from your Planning Commission, so you'll have the full opportunity to discuss that at your next meeting.
Okay, thank you for that. Market Street Plaza, I'm just wondering if we could have an update on that, maybe put something on the website, just to let people know, and the public who ask questions about it from now occasionally, just give an update, maybe a little history on that, that's just a minor item that.
Chris, that, I know it's been a closed session item, but could there be something generally just about process, or what are our limitations?
I suppose we could provide some, some kind of an update. Community Development Department and City Attorney's Office right now is working on that. There isn't a whole lot to report at the moment, but I think it's worthy to note that when there is something to report, we definitely will let the public know, and we might have a closed session on that, too, coming up.
Yeah, I, I recognize that it's being discussed in, in closed session, but it just, you know, when something lingers for a long time, people ask questions, like they did at the candidate forum, so I thought that might be important. The second issue has to do with water. There's a lot of discussion in the community about, we don't have any water. Water is a complex subject, and I think if we can find some way to communicate with the public, with a staff report, maybe a visualization of when the rain comes down, and where it goes, so that people understand our true water condition, because I think there's a lot of misunderstanding in the, in the public with respect to our water situation, so.
Kind of like this one-page thing that would, you know, I mean, because, you know, we had that huge presentation.
I know.
But, no, I'm saying, that would be very difficult to understand.
Yeah, it's not easy.
Something like that. I'm just, I'm looking over at, Scott, is that?
Exactly.
Would that be something perhaps Public Works could put into a beautiful little?
Sure. I think the, it's going to require even more thought than the budget, it's more complicated in the budget, believe it or not, but it is something I know that they're interested doing, so I think using this model would be helpful.
Yeah.
Furthermore, the, I think it's, Councilmember Heller had asked, we plan to give an update, I think at the next council meeting, on the water supply issue, just generally speaking. We won't have an infographic ready by.
Right, yeah, that's fine.
But I do like to give just a big drop of water and.
Got it.
Showing how it works, yeah.
No, but we did have a huge comprehensive presentation, I don't know, two months ago, but, you know, maybe for us that have been doing it for a number of years, we understood it, but the general public.
Yes, that was very complicated, and so we, we definitely have our work cut out for us to make it more understandable, but we can't do that.
I might be dating myself again, but didn't the One Water Plan have a graphic?
For sources, it did, in the master plan.
Well, I came to a presentation before being a council member, one time, and the One Water Plan was being presented, and I remember a graphic at that time that showed sort of the way water flows through Morro Bay. And perhaps that was more on storm drains, I could be misremembering, but I felt like they had something.
I think that was specific, specific to when the water's here. I think what Councilmember Heller is talking about is, you know, how the water gets here, because there's multiple sources.
Right, in the context of the drought and all that stuff.
Yeah, and the state water project.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, but again, we, I, Greg's not here, but I think we plan to give an update at the next council meeting.
Great.
Was it the second, yeah, second one in October, right, yeah.
Great. Okay, my next one has to do with water as well, as we, it's fantastic that we've got sewage running now to the wharf, that's a huge milestone, and we definitely need to have a party about that. In thinking about the recycled water, I think at some point in time, Corolo or staff needs to start thinking about the cost per acre foot to generate this water, and I don't know if that started or not, but I think as I communicated in writing here, that, that we need to, you know, start thinking about that, the first cost, as well as the annual operational cost, and the capital cost budget, et cetera. So I'm just mentioning that, because I'm not sure where else in the meeting to talk about some of these things, so it doesn't necessarily be a formal future agenda item, but, you know, in the next quarter or two, I think we should probably be looking at that very closely.
Yeah, and, and by the way, I just, this is, I'll date myself as well, the original Nunley document talked about a cost per acre foot there.
Yeah.
But of course, that's well outdated, and that needs to be updated.
Right, right.
Thanks.
Let's see here, the dilapidated boats in the bay, we talked about.
Yeah, we did.
I'm concerned about that. I've never had anyone come up to me before, but some visitors have come up to me.
Dilapidated boats in the bay.
Boy, look at, the boats in the bay look horrible, you know, they look like no one's either living on them, or taking care of them, or whatever, so I would like, I would like staff to come back with something on that, above and beyond what Mr. Andersby talked about. Another thing on my list is the draft landscaping plan for the bike path that we ran a bunch of piping through. I know it's out there, it's, I don't think it's on the website yet.
Not yet.
What's the plan on, on showing that to the public?
Good question. Greg provided a response. He said, you know, we hope, and that's, there's a big word, circle around hope, hope to have this in mid-November for PWA review, so that slides, it would be early next year. But it is, it's on the work plan for Anvil to, to work on the bike, bike path, but there's another team, I think, working on the landscape plan.
Okay.
So hopefully they'll all come together later this year.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So we're all the way down to number nine people, so don't worry, we're moving through it here.
You're doing well.
So the overhead projector question.
Oh, that's.
Looks like you used, dipped it in the bud with that flash drive. That's awesome. And you, do you ask for them to give it to you 30 minutes before the meeting, or?
Ideally, at this evening's meeting, the, John actually emailed it to me, and I was able to put it on a flash drive here at the meeting and, and load it up.
That's great. I've been in other meetings where they do that. I don't want to burden you with it, but if it's something you can do fairly routinely, that would be fantastic, and we can forget about the overhead projector, hopefully.
Yes.
Was nice to see, though.
I know, it was great. It was really, really great. Affordable housing, we'll be meeting with, with People Self-Help Housing Corporation next week, hopefully. We'll have some good things to talk about there.
Yeah, we, we have that as a result of the recommendation, last meeting, or meeting before last, we had that Subcommittee of Planning Commission, myself, Councilmember Ford, and Scott, and Mr. Graham, looking at that, and the chamber folks, looking at that master plan for the city in terms of opportunity cycles.
Great, that's great. And I've got to mention again, the 12-unit affordable housing project on a 4,000-square-foot lot that PSHHC developed in Santa Barbara. I drove by it last weekend, and it's phenomenal.
How big are the units approximately?
They're 20 square feet. No, I don't.
No, I'm just curious.
I've asked Ken Trigero for a site plan and unit floor plans.
Would you forward that to me?
Yeah, if I get them, you know, we'll, hopefully we can get all that together at the meeting when we go down there, because that's really the $64 question.
Twenty, 20 square feet.
Yeah, they're not big.
No.
But I was impressed with that. The last one really is the one that I'm probably most serious about, and, and we've talked about this before, and I'm going to get on my soapbox here. You know, I've been involved with kind of a sustainable-thinking way of doing things and building things for a long, long time, and I've come to the conclusion that tearing down buildings is kind of something we do here in the United States. I think about Europe, you know, what if they tore down all their buildings that were 100 years old? You know, I don't think anyone would go there to visit. I feel that way about the stacks and the plant, the power plant here, and I know we have an agreement to take the stacks down by 2028 and so forth. And I know that when Dynegy owned the property, they looked for developers who might take that site on and develop it. In an informal discussion with Claudia Morrow of Vistra many months ago, she said Vistra is not a developer, they're not a developing company, but they might be interested in talking to a developer who would want to buy that piece of the parcel. So what I'm asking council for, if, and staff, would be, and your subcommittee, would be if you'd be willing to talk with Vistra about partnering with them, to put out an RFQ or an RFP on a nationwide basis, one last shot, is there anyone interested in buying this property and taking on all the liability, hazardous materials, and developing it into something that's magnificent, like what they're doing in San Francisco, at Portero Bay, what they've done in London at the Tate Modern Art Museum. Around the world, these kinds of facilities are being repurposed and reused into something new, as well as maintaining the history that's associated with it. So that, that is my, that is my really big request, to ask staff to talk with Vistra to see if that's something they might be interested in doing.
So I'll, I'll look to Chris. There is an MOU, and there's already a project submission, and there is already an action taken by council, and it would be, in my opinion, I would not support undoing all of that. Now, Chris, if you want to comment?
The mayor's correct that we have existing agreements, you know, in this, the question that's being posed is something that, you know, if council supports it, we could pose it to Vistra. I think it would take a lot of unwinding to do so. It's not impossible, you know, years have gone into where we are now, but the stacks aren't down yet, so if at council's direction, because it is up to council, you know, we, we could talk to Vistra about that. I wouldn't be surprised if their answer is what they've already agreed to in writing, which is to take them down, but, you know, it's, it's up to council whether or not they'd want to explore that, and take a different direction than council's already taken in the last few years.
I've stated my comment, I don't know, I'm, I'm looking around, but.
I can tell I have overwhelming support for this idea.
Yeah, well, that's a complex one, too.
I understand, I understand the issues as well, believe me, I understand it all.
I agree with your, your first opening statement about.
Which was that?
Europe, well, Europe, you know, I mean, tearing down old buildings, I, I absolutely agree with that. But with regard to this one, we've taken council action, we have an MOU, we also have a project that's submitted that includes the teardown of those.
Stack, yeah. Does it include teardown of the, of the power plant?
A, a building, yeah, right, and the stacks.
We could unwind it, I mean, Chris has got some spare time.
Well, I, I don't want to say, never say never, but it would be quite a task, I think, to unwind it. And yes, the project that has been submitted by Vistra is for both demolition of the stacks and then a proposed, the proposed building at the Bess, so they have two, two aspects in their submittal.
Well, I appreciate everyone listening to this. My sustainability hat is something I've worn for many years, and I, and I truly believe that 10, 20 years from now, we'll regret having torn the building down, but I understand what it involves to, to unwind everything we've put in place, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for listening.
Appreciate that thoughtful list.
Can I say I admire your list, Councilmember Heller? I mean, I admire that you, you, you know, as you said, you're, you're going out and you want to say, you know, say your piece, and so thank you for bringing those forward, and, and you have a lot of great points, and as the mayor said about the building, but because of what her attorney said about the unwinding process, that's why I didn't get a head nod, I didn't give you a head nod on that, but I do love the idea of repurposing our old buildings, and so there, there was some, there's some good insight there. So thank you for your thoughtfulness and for serving.
Thanks for listening. Just as the clock goes clicking, it's going faster and faster, and I get this kind of like, but, anyway, thank you all for listening.
Thanks, Jeff, appreciate that. All right, seeing no other recommendations, we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting, the next regular meeting of the Morro Bay City Council will be held on Tuesday, October 25th, 2022, at 5:30 PM, right here in the Veterans Hall. Thank you for the privilege of your time, have a great evening.